Alderman Kukocowski.
Here.
Bekavich.
Here.
Verhaelen.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Alderman Kukocowski is excused.
For the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to pack 316 from Cedar Hills to come up and lead us. We're ready for you. When you start, we'll start.
(inaudible).
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 Nice work, guys. I had the opportunity to speak to them before the meeting, asked a lot of good questions,
got to meet their parents. Future stars, future superstars. So thanks for being here, and they're gonna follow along a little bit at the meeting. Item three is the approval of the minutes of January 17, 2017.
Bekavich will make a motion to approve the minutes of 1:17:17.
Verhaelen, second. Roll call.
Alderman Bekavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kukocowski.
Aye.
Under public hearings, item four is a special assessment consideration for the city's intention to exercise its power under section 3.200 of the municipal code of the city of Oak Creek to levy special assessments upon abutting property for benefits conferred upon such property, running on 3280 and 3310 East Kinder Lane in the 4th District. City Clerk will now read the public hearing notice.
Public hearing number one is a public hearing on special assessments for final lift of asphalt and completion of pavement in accordance with resolution numbers 11382, 071613, and 11409, 100113, project number 05061, dated this first day of December 2016.
Okay. You have anything? Nope. All right. You want...
(inaudible).
You have a... You're good?
(inaudible).
Yep. Question from the attorney, the city clerk will...
And I'd like to clarify, dated the 12th day of January 2017.
Sounds good. We will take public comment on these items, on this item. If you, as Mr. Degner's doing, if you want to make a public comment on this item. I'll make three calls.
Different.
Different item, okay. I have one for item number four. I'll make three calls for comments. Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and then your comment. You have three minutes. Brad Schmidt.
I guess just my comment is that for these three lots that you... I have, just have the addresses. The money is sitting in escrow for all three. That's been confirmed. So I guess that, now that it's on the three, I'm very happy.
Okay. That's all you need. Good. Glad you're happy. Second call for public comments on item number four. Third and final call for public comments on item number four. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to item five, which is a consideration of resolution number 11786-020717, Final Resolution Authorizing Public Improvements and Levying Special Assessments Against Benefited Property, Kinder Lane CSM, project number 05061 in the 4th District. Any questions or comments from the council? Alderman Kukocowski?
I just want to say thanks for working this out. I know it was on an agenda, it was on the agenda meeting or two ago, and some of us had some questions, and it got, seems like it got worked out to everyone's satisfaction, because it went pretty quick here tonight. So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? No other comments? Motion on five.
Someone will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11786, Final Resolution Authorizing Public Improvements and Levying Special Assessments Against Benefited Property, Kinder Lane CSM, project number 05061.
Kukocowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kukocowski.
Aye.
Bekavich.
Aye.
Is six a public hearing? Okay. Item six is a public hearing on a conditional use request by We Energies and Wisepark LLC for a conditional use permit allowing a We Energies electrical substation and communication pole on a portion of the property at 10861 South Hall Avenue in the 5th District. The city clerk will now read that public hearing notice into the record.
Public hearing number two is to consider a request by We Energies and Wisepark LLC for a conditional use permit allowing a We Energies electric, electrical substation and communication pole on a portion of the property at 10861 South Hall Avenue. The applicant is Arlene Book, We Energies, and Jerry Frankie, Wisepark LLC. Property owner is Wisepark LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of the notice is January 12, 2017.
Doug?
Thank you. Good evening. I am Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the city, and this is a public hearing, a request by We Energies for an electrical substation for a, with a communications pole located in a portion of the property at 10861 South Hall Avenue. Utility substations are a conditional use in the M1 Manufacturing Zoning District, which the property is zoned. And if we can maybe just get the graphic up on the screen, it can show the location map. The planned land use map as part of the comprehensive plan does show this area as planned, planned industrial, as well as the properties to the north as planned industrial. This is all the way actually at the south end of the Oakview Business Park, adjacent to county lands that are owned, which are next to the Ritt River.
Just continue without it if you can't get it. There you go.
With respect to the, its location, and you can see it here, it is, again, at the south end of the Oakview Business Park, and I can, we'll just leave that, leave that go for right now. It is on property which is, again, zone M1. Utility substations by code do need to be a minimum of 50-foot setback from the property line. While this is not a review of the site and billing plans for that substation, it is, it is only the conditional use permit, but the Plan Commission will be actually reviewing site and building plans at a subsequent meeting. Again, does conform with the, the future land use map as part of the comprehensive plan. Plan Commission has reviewed the proposed conditional use permit for an electrical substation at this location, and they have recommended their approval of subject conditions and restrictions, which you have as part of your staff report and council packet. So with that, I would, again, say that this is a public hearing and anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for a electrical substation with a communications pole for the property at 10861 South Hall Avenue, please fill out an appearance form, present that to the city clerk. When your name is called, please proceed to the, to the podium and address your questions or comments to the common council. Thank you.
Make three calls for public comment on this item. First call, resident Arden Degner.
Arden Degner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. It was, it was very interesting, this proposal, because as a, as a reason to locate it in this location, the comment was made that a computer facility would be located, it could draw the water from the lake, I mean, from the river. Now, I would imagine that that is looking at far advanced, because this Ritt River, which is on the county line there, is, is, the flow is quite sporadic, depending upon what time of year it is, and I am just wondering whether they're looking forward to the Milwaukee Shore Utility putting water in there. But my big question is, if this location is going to be a part of the, of the Wisepower location, why isn't an intake shown on their survey map?
Thanks for your comments. I don't know that there, there's any water use at this site, so I don't know that that...
Yeah, Steve, it specifically says in the report there's no water use.
Yeah, so, well, I appreciate the comments. It's not relevant to this agenda item. Any other comments? This will be the second call. Third and final call for, for item number six. Seeing no one coming forward, I will close the public hearing and move to item seven, which is the consideration of ordinance number 2839 approving a conditional use permit for a We Energies electrical substation with communications pole located on a portion of the property at 10861 South Hall Avenue in the 5th District. Open it up to the council for any questions and/or comments.
One question.
Arden Verhaelen.
My question is, with regards to the communication pole, I realize that probably at this time it's strictly for We Energies use, but does that preclude them, because they already have the conditional use for a communications pole, does that preclude them at any time from perhaps putting a different, larger pole in there for, you know, cell towers?
Doug, any ideas on that?
Sure. I mean, if that were to occur, I mean, it would have to be done in accordance with whatever local and state statutes are in place, and the, and there's been a lot of press about cellphone communications towers lately in other communities. The city does have regulations with respect to that, where they can be located, how they can be located. Just suffice to say that if a proposal is submitted, it would need to conform with local and state statute.
Okay. Alderman. Hold on one second. Alderman Gale, if you have a comment, fill out a comment form, bring it on up, but I'll, let me recognize Alderman Gale. You can't speak from the audience, you have to speak from the podium. Alderman Gale?
Danny, the access and the crossing the bike path, did you guys square that away at planning?
They were going through an official CSM, and they were gonna take care of all of that, along with county land for the standoff, so this was not impactful for any of that. Basically, there's just an access road in there from ATC.
All right, Brian, and Brian brought something up, because the driveway could be moved depending upon what eventually goes there.
If, if need be, it's just a gravel path, and, again, the substation really just, it's just gonna step up and down the voltage and distribute it to different spots. It's really just another feeder station, so there's no power generation there.
Okay. And Mayor, if this gentleman's gonna speak from We Energies, why don't you have him just quickly address the...
Come on up. Just identify yourself. I didn't know who you were, so identify yourself, address.
For the audience, just to justify why, why this is actually gonna be beneficial to the...
Jim Killam, I represent We Energies. I'm also an Oak Creek resident.
Thank you.
The wood pole, there's about a 95% chance we won't be using that. ATC, the transmission company, is gonna put optic fiber in the transmission lines at the same time. We just added it just in case. It's a single wood pole, and it would not be anything but a wood pole with our equipment on it. None of our substations have least cellular or any of that stuff on them, so...
Okay. Apologize for not recognizing you. Anything else from the council? Motion?
Bekavich will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2839 approving conditional use permit for We Energies electrical substation with communications pole located on the portion of the property at 10861 South Hall Avenue.
Verhaelen, second.
Do I have it? Verhaelen, second?
Yep.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kukocowski.
Aye.
Bekavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Good luck. All right, moving on to recognition. We have a new employee in the city, a destination marketing specialist. Her name is Kristen Koaleski, and I believe the city administrator's gonna...
Sure, I can give, I know, I know the council's aware of the, the short history with regards to the position creation, but for the folks at home and for some of the folks in the audience, semi-recent changes to state law required municipalities to redirect their, and earmark their room tax dollars from their local hotels to specific uses, whereas before they were less defined, they're, they're more defined now. And one of the opportunities that we had with that change in state law was the creation of a tourism commission. Last month, we've, we've convened the tourism commission, I believe, three times, and working out some organizational components to that group, but one of their main, one of their main actions to begin that group was to get on board our destination marketing specialist. Of about 49 applicants, our tourism commission, commission selected Kristen Koaleski, and we, we have a lot for Kristen to do, among other things. Kristen will be in charge of bringing events to various facilities in the city of Oak Creek, varied events, along with some other business development, business development actions will, will be having her take on, and projects she'll be taking on. So with that, if it pleases the mayor and the council, I'd ask Kristen to come up and maybe introduce herself and say a few words.
No more than 30 minutes on that speech.
Hello. Um, yeah, I'm very excited to be here and to work for the city of Oak Creek. I came from roundy supermarkets in Milwaukee, and I do have experience in events, so I'm excited to bring some new events this summer.
That's it?
Yes.
All right.
To the point.
That's good. We're excited to have you here, so welcome. Appreciate it. All right. Moving on. Other recognition. Item nine is a council proclamation number 17-01. It's a congratulations to Eater Flag South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2016 Business of the Year Award finalist. I'm not gonna read all the proclamations. We presented them to these businesses at the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce Awards. What day was that? Last Wednesday, last Thursday? At the, at a facility just outside of Oak Creek. So I just need a motion on, there's four of them, I think, four of them. Yeah, I need a motion and a second on each. So a motion on nine.
Gale, move to approve council proclamation number 17-01. Congratulations to Eater Flag South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2016 Business of the Year Award finalist.
Kukocowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kukocowski.
Aye.
Bekavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
All right. Item 10 is a council proclamation on, on number 17-02. It's a congratulations to Traditoria Di Carlo, better known as Di Carlo, South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2016 Pride and Premises Award winner.
Gale, move to approve council proclamation number 17-02. Congratulations to Traditoria Di Carlo, South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2016 Pride and Premises Award winner.
Kukocowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kukocowski.
Aye.
Bekavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 11 is a consideration of council proclamation number 17-03. It's congratulations to Crohn's Inc., South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2016 Business of the Year Award winner. Motion?
Gale, move to approve council proclamation number 17-03. Congratulations to Crohn's Inc., who is very appreciative of the award at the banquet. South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2016 Business of the Year Award winner.
Kukocowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bekavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kukocowski.
Aye.
And the final recognition item is, item number 12, is a consideration of council proclamation number 17-04. It's congratulations to Tri-City National Bank, South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2016 Business of the Year Award finalist. Motion?
Gale, move to approve council proclamation 17-04. Congratulations to Tri-City National Bank, South Suburban Chamber of Commerce, 2016 Business of the Year Award finalist.
Kukocowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kukocowski.
Aye.
Bekavich.
Aye.
Congratulations to all those winners. I, I take special pride at three of the four. We're in Oak Creek. That's cool. All great, great representatives of the business community in our city, and congratulations to Crohn's as well. They do a nice job, and so I think it's one of Franklin's largest employers, so, well done. All right, moving on to new business. Item 13 is an informational item. It's a treasures report from our fantastic city treasurer, Barb Guckenberger, on investing and banking accounts for the month ending December 31, 2016.
Good evening. As Mayor said, I, I've put together a monthly treasures report, report for the purpose of providing the council and the public of the current condition of the city's treasure, which I'll be presenting at the first meeting of every month. I may or not, may or may not be able to be at each of these meetings, so I kind of wanted to go through it a little bit with you, since I'm not able to be here. I do want to point out that this is just showing the beginning and ending balances for each of our accounts. Does not mean that this money is available for general spending. A lot of it is allocated for different things, such as projects, tifing curmudgeled districts, and money that has to be paid back to the other taxing jurisdictions. I was just going to kind of go through it with you, if that's all right with you.
Sure.
Okay, so, starting from left to right, it lists each one of our different accounts that we have. We have, as you can see, we have multiple accounts with Tri-City Bank. That's our, our main banking. And then we have different investment accounts, and so the first column shows the beginning balance, and then any additions to the account, which may or may not be, some of them may be unrealized gains or losses. It does not mean we've actually had any losses. Some of them can be just market adjustments based on that current month. There could be management fees and transfers and things between the accounts. And then we have your ending account balance, and then to the right of that, because some of the, some of the additions are for other things besides interest, I wanted to show the actual interest earned on each of the accounts separately from that. And then to the right of that, we have the interest rate on each of the accounts, and then to the far right, percentage of each investment to the total amount of investments. I did want to point out that in the ADM account and the LGIP accounts, because there's special purpose accounts for things like two districts and that, I wanted to show what was actually just part of the general, basically general fund account. So I showed those amounts separately, but in the total, those amounts are also in there. And then at the bottom, I just wanted to kind of separate tax collection. We have two different tax accounts, so you'll see two different sections. You got tax account two, and then just the regular tax account. Total tax collection for the month of December. Again, I just wanted you to kind of see the flow of money that comes in each month. Obviously, December is our biggest month for that, so it'll go down as the year goes on. I guess that's about it.
Would you describe the tax payment climate in the new building? This is the second year we've done it here?
Yes.
Everything work well?
Um, I would say overall, you know, it's a little bit different. I think people are a little more used to seeing people, but, you know, I, I think it's been fine. Not too many complaints this year, I don't think.
Good. Questions from the council or comments?
Here, just want to extend...
Go ahead. Alderman Gale?
Thanks to the treasurer for hard work in organizing this for the council. Just to give a picture, regularly of how we're sitting as a, as a community in terms of finances, obviously, I think we still reflect the fact that we're in very good financial standing, and the point is, though, it's not all spendable.
Exactly. I did want to mention, too, that this report, along with another one that kind of expands on the numbers, will be shared with finance committee at our meetings, and that will help, I, I think, maybe figure out better ways to invest money and, you know, cash flows and that.
I think it's important to note, it's, it's just not sitting at the, at the state pool. We're actively trying to, you know, get the best returns for the, for the citizens by, you know, diversifying, and happening to some of the local money management firms.
Not that there's a lot of high paying...
No.
Out there.
But that's standard practice for cities like us.
Yep, absolutely.
Nothing else? I thank you for the presentation. All right, moving on to item 14. It's a consideration of ordinance number 2841. It would amend section five of ordinance number 2818, fixing the salary ranges and allowances for non-union general management personnel and other city offices and positions for the year 2016. The Personnel Committee discussed this?
Yes.
Yes, so...
At our last meeting.
The last meeting. What was the general consensus report from the chair?
The consensus was unanimous.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So unanimous vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Ted, why don't you add?
Actually, I was, I was gonna come up and say that this is the wage rate that was approved by the Personnel Committee last year as well as this year. It was inadvertently put in, in the, uh, uh, salary scale incorrectly this year. This is just to correct that error and to get these individuals to the pay scale that they, they were promised.
Okay. Any questions?
I had a...
Alderman Verhaelen?
I had a, I had a question. On, on my way in here tonight, and I, I don't mean to undermine the decisions of the Personnel Committee, but there was some concern as to when a certain amount of employees would, would get their pay bump to, up to operator one, I guess, from being operator, or operator two to operator one, whatever, vice versa. But at any rate, I understand that the, the step pay situation was eliminated a while ago, and they said that there was, I guess, four individuals that have been here a while, and they were wondering when they'd be eligible to make the next step. That's the question.
Ted, do you have a comment on that, or usually, is Becky here?
No. Actually, Becky had to go, but I couldn't really tell you when exactly those individuals would be able to make the step to operator two. It would all depend on retirements and/or individuals finding different jobs if they elected to do so. So, I mean, we do have a certain amount of, of people that, that are in our skill-based plan that will be operator twos, operator ones, and labor drivers. Right now, we're in a process of balancing those. When the, when, uh, so there would need to be a number of retirements before those individuals move up. I can't give you an exact date.
Anything else?
Well, I guess, I guess it's not a really a concern at, at this point in time, but I guess my concern is people that are, that are already operator ones, and they, and they, they've had ample experience running different pieces of equipment and whatnot at, at the street department, where we get skilled people leaving, and then we have to go through training periods for new people, again, to, to get them up to whatever level of experience that they need. And I'd hate to see, you know, us lose skilled people for lack of adequate compensation.
Your comments are noted. Anybody else?
Lack of adequate budget's a problem.
Alderman Gale?
I realize that. I realize that.
And Mark, you know...
Alderman Bekavich?
Sorry. For what it's worth, we did discuss in Personnel, street department, folks did come in, they explained their concerns. We know the system isn't perfect. They talked about the turnover, and actually, you know, the, the future of the city relies on these people, too, to be cross-trained that way. So, we, we do want to look at it. We want to come up with something better, but as Alderman Gale said, right now, we're just kind of under some budget restraints, and this is what we got right now. We get it. We do get it.
Anything else? Motion on 14.
Someone will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2841, amending section five of ordinance number 2818, fixing the salary ranges and allowances for non-union general management personnel and other city offices and positions for the year 2016.
Bekavich, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kukocowski.
Aye.
Bekavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
A reluctant aye.
Okay. Alderman, Alderman. Item 15 is a consideration of resolution number 11790-020717, establishing the date and time of the 2017 order review. Um, is that a city clerk item?
Sure.
All right.
Uh, this is just a resolution that annually, the board determines on the statutory date to convene for the Board of Review, and then the board will meet on May 22, 2017, and they'll determine, set up the rest of the timeframes for Board of Review for open book and cases to be heard by the board. On your council report, just to note, there might be a typo of a 16. Didn't replace your page, but it is to review the 2017 assessment rule and set the 2017 Board of Review date.
Okay, questions? Motion?
Gale, move to approve ordinance number 2840, repealing ordinance number 2784, establishing a Board of, sorry, where I'm going, Steve?
You gotta go to 15.
Gale, move to approve resolution 11790-020717, establishing the and time of the 2017 Board of Review.
Someone, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kukocowski.
Aye.
Bekavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 16 is a consideration of ordinance number 2840, repealing ordinance number 2784, establishing a Board of Absentee Canvassers, also a city clerk item.
To simply explain, so when we move to a central count environment for our election cycle for the city, how the state statutes read is that we need to do that, determine that process for an entire election cycle, which essentially is a calendar year. So in 2015, we established the Absentee Board of Canvassers, which would convene and conduct our central count of our... our central count of our absentee ballots here at City Hall as a determined location. For the 2016 cycle, that was a very active election year, and it was a great cost savings to the city to create the Board of Canvassers and then to conduct central count and processing absentee ballots here. This election cycle for 2017, we have very low turnout elections. The February and April, February is anticipated to be incredibly small turnout. We will revert back for this year, be it a cost savings to the city, to processing those absentee ballots back at the polling locations like historically we have always done. So, what the state statute, what the Elections and Ethics Committee asks us to do is to rescind the ordinance establishing the Board of Canvassers for this year. And then, next year, which will be another active cycle with a governor race, we will reinstate. It is, I'm anticipating that we will reinstate the Board of Absentee Ballot Canvassers to revert back to a central count process for 2018 election year. So, it's a simple, a simple process, just to have it right on the books on how we're going to be processing our ballots.
Okay, any questions? Motion?
You'll move to approve ordinance 2840, repealing ordinance number 2784, establishing a Board of Absentee Canvassers.
Verhalem's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Bakayevich?
Aye.
Verhalem?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Item 17, we're going to move on the, right after 23. Moving us to health is item 18
is a motion, consideration of a motion to approve the contract and addendum to administer the tattoo and body piercing licensing and inspection program. As an agent for the Department of Safety and Professional Services, we have Jackie Ovi and are here to answer any questions. Do you have any presentation? No? There you go.
Oh, great. Hi. This is just a, in the past, the City of Oak Creek has done these inspections and licenses for tattoo and body piercing establishments. This past year, the Department of Health Services, who used to run this program, transferred the responsibility of the program to the Department of Safety and Professional Services. So, this is just signing that agreement so we can do those inspections and licensing with the new agency that oversees that.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
So, yeah, just a year, once a year inspection, or is it biannual or quarterly or what?
It's once a year. And then, any complaints that we would receive.
Kirkowski will make a motion to approve the contract and addendum to administer the tattoo and body piercing licensing and inspection program as an agent for the Department of Safety and Professional Services.
Kaye Mitchell's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bakayevich?
Aye.
Verhalem?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 19 is a consideration of a motion to approve the interim health officer Jaclyn Ovi and the deputy health officer Ann Barberina to complete an application for the Emerging Leaders in Public Health ELPH Program from the Kresge Foundation. What is that exactly?
The Kresge Foundation is housed at the University of North Carolina Gilling School of Global Public Health. And this is a foundation that is supporting teams of a leader and a co-leader to come up with a transformative concept for their local public health department. The team has to be from a local health department. So, with the interim health officer and the deputy health officer, we would qualify for a leadership team to present a transformative concept. And Ann and I discussed what we would want to present. And given the opportunity that we have for looking at building capacity among the two communities, we want to focus on how we can do that and come up with a business model for that.
So, you're going to come up with a plan and figure it out. How much, how much work is this going to take?
It does require an 18-month commitment on our part and the city's part. And then, it also would have the possibility of five out-of-state travels. They want you to meet with the other teams and meet with professionals from the School of Public Health to help with your business model and budget. And then, also doing site visits to one of the other team members' health departments to see what they're working on.
Okay. Ann, any additional comments?
Something I'm looking forward to. I think it would really help as far as shared services and gaining direction on how to go about.
Okay. Questions from the council? City Administrator?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to commend Ann and Jackie on this. I was really happy to see this when it came across my desk internally. I think it's very forward-thinking in light of what we have going on with the Public Policy Forum. I think this is a very logical intersection of time. But if you would, Jackie, or Ann, could you talk about the application timeline as well as the award timeline a little bit more, just so we can get a better understanding of how, you know, that kind of coincides with the, you know, the end and recommendations being brought forward by Public Policy Forum at the end of March?
The application is due on February 20. And if you're chosen, the first meeting of the teams is in May. And they'll help you, between May and July, they'll help you develop your business plan and budget. And the awards of the grant funding would be in July of 2017. And then, the commitment is through July of 2018.
Okay. Any questions? Motion?
Kirkowski will make a motion to approve the interim health officer Jaclyn Ovi and the deputy health officer Ann Barberina to complete an application for the Emerging Leaders in Public Health Program from the Kresge Foundation.
Kaye Mitchell's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bakayevich?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Bakayevich?
Aye.
Good luck. Let us know how it turns out. All right, under Community Development, item
20 is a consideration of resolution number 11788-020717, redesignating the roadway through Lake Vista Park and the portion of East Ryan Road east of South Fifth Avenue to Lake Vista Parkway and Lake Vista Boulevard in the 4th District. Doug?
Hopefully, everyone's aware of the improvements that have been taking place with respect to the extension of Fifth Avenue and the rubberwork that's been accomplished at its intersection with State Highway 100 and Highway 32. Given that the roadway is done and given that the Parkway Road through Lake Vista Park has been completed, the, actually, Ryan Road west of the railroad tracks has been terminated in the cul-de-sac. So, rather than having that portion of Ryan Road east of the cul-de-sac remain and have potentially properties with addresses of having a Ryan Road address without access to Ryan Road, I felt it would be appropriate to rename that section to Lake Vista Boulevard. And in the exhibit that you hopefully- In the exhibit that you now see on the screen, most of you, you can see that how that roadway would be renamed from, again, the intersection at Fifth Avenue. The reason why we need to have both a Lake Vista Boulevard and Lake Vista Parkway name is given the meandering nature of that road, there are duplicate east-west sections of that roadway. And to avoid having any confusion with respect to addressing, the fire department has asked that we give that section a distinct roadway. Hence, we both have Lake Vista Boulevard and Lake Vista Parkway.
Questions? Seems logical. Chief, anything on that? No? All right. Didn't mean to wake you up over there.
Mayor, I guess I had one.
Oliver Kirkowski, just teasing. He was fully awake.
Put the, was consideration given to the Lake Vista Parkway with the address range of 4,000 to 4,300 east being called North Lake Vista Parkway and the Lake Vista Boulevard be called South Lake Vista Parkway or vice versa?
The problem with that is because, given that the roadway has an east-west configuration, it would have been even more confusing had we call, had a east-north Lake Vista Parkway. So, this is the cleanest way of doing that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good answer, Doug. Any other questions or comments? Motion?
Someone will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11788, redesignating the roadway through Lake Vista Park and the portion of East Ryan Road east of South Fifth Avenue to Lake Vista Parkway and Lake Vista Boulevard.
You'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Bakayevich?
Aye.
Verhalem?
Aye.
Item 21 is a consideration of resolution number 11791-02017-020717, approving the Second Amendment to the Carrollville Crossings Subdivision Development Agreement for the Design and Installation of Public Improvements at 8781 South Fifth Avenue for Carrollville Crossings Edition Number One, tax key numbers, tax key 865-0114, project numbers 16053 and 16054.
I can take this one, Mayor. Thank you. I've got the graphic up on the screen. This is a further phase, deals with a further phase of Carrollville Crossing. The original, goes back to the original development agreement circa 2003. There was an amendment in 2011 to that development agreement, which dealt with the same portion of the property. So, as you see on the screen, we're looking at the property that fronts, or Sixth Street. Cooper Court is the east-west street on the south portion of the properties, Fifth Avenue, and then Pute's Road. But the First Amendment did deal with that portion of the property. And what you see here now is eight lots. That was, at that time, that development agreement or that amendment, excuse me, dealt with a rezoning of that portion of the property, which was multifamily RM1, and was rezoned to RS4 and with a proposed 10 lots. And that was looked favorably upon because there was not a big appetite for multifamily in that neighborhood. And, but it was a bit problematic because it was squeezing too many lots on too little real estate. That did not, that kind of stalled. Now, this action here, the Second Amendment, just deals with eight lots, which fits the zoning and more fits with the lots that have been developed previously. So, basically, this then amendment deals with how those lots will be served with sewer water. Also deals with the final surfacing of the roadway. And then, also the ponds, which are in somewhat poor condition. They've got to do a project to shape those up. They do not hold water as they are intended to be. They're going to be pumped out, fitted with a clay liner, and then shaped up and restored. So, basically, that's it. Any questions you might have?
Questions from the council? Alderman Gale?
Mike, that's the developer's class that's on our-
Yes, 100%, on the developer.
And then, the streets are going to be, the lift on the street on the south side will be done here?
Yes, that's correct. They will be done as the lots come online to be built upon.
Alderman Toman?
Mike, when does the pond work start?
My latest, the latest schedule I'm aware of is that this is all going to take place in 2017.
Anything else? Motion?
Someone will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11791, approving the Second Amendment to the Carrollville Crossing Subdivision Development Agreement for the Design and Installation of Public Improvements at 8781 South Fifth Avenue for Carrollville Crossings Edition Number One, tax key 865-0114-0000, project numbers 16053 and 16054.
You'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Bakayevich?
Aye.
Verhalem?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
And item 22 is a consideration of resolution number 11794-020717, authorizing the mayor
and city clerk to enter into a contract with Vandewell and Associates for the preparation of the project plans for an amendment to tax incremental district number six and the creation of tax incremental district number 13 in an amount not to exceed $20,000. And that's in the 4th and 6th districts. Doug?
Thank you. At the November 2016 council meeting, the council authorized staff to take the preliminary steps to create tax incremental district or TID 13 for the Lake Vista neighborhood. TID 13 is in the process of being created right now as a blighted district and will be designated as a recipient TIF district, with TID 6 being the donor, TID 6 being the Creekside Corporate Park on 13th Street, south of Ryan Road. An initial step in this process is the preparation of a project plan for the recipient district 13, as well as an amendment to the project plan for the donor district would be TID 6. And given the intricacies involved in the designation of these districts as both a donor and donee, we thought it staff felt it prudent to engage Vandewell and Associates to assist in the preparation of those project plans and the amendment respectfully. And given the fact that they have done previous work with the city on the redevelopment district along the lake front and previous like designations, we felt it'd be just appropriate to have some consistent stream of thought in the preparation of all those documents in order to, again, make sure that we're dotting the i's, crossing the t's, making sure that we're doing everything in accordance with the state statute. Again, given that it's, we're entering into this new donor-doneee relationship, we want to make sure we had people that experience with that.
Okay, questions from the council?
Comments?
Alderman Verhalem, comment?
Just one thing. Goes back, I guess, to earlier discussion about the personnel item. And I, it's not directly intertwined, I guess, but in a roundabout way it is. When we agreed to make a donor TIF or TID 13, that means monies that could go into the general fund are diverted to support the viability of another TIF. And it takes away from our ability to properly fund other things in the city. So, just so everyone's aware in the audience that the decision was made to divert money from a TID that could be closed to another TIF.
Doug? And that's true. I would also add to that, that, I mean, if the city were to elect to close TID 6, it would only be entitled to levy for half of the increment that's been generated by that. So, in essence, in leveraging those resources to assist with TID 13 and the projects within TID 13, the city is maximizing the use of those dollars, whereas there would only be essentially 50% of that increment would be available should the city decide to close that district. City Administrator?
Thanks, Mayor. And just to add on to what Doug said, too, with the expertise here with Vandewell, for the council's benefit, we still are able to use our financial and our legal teams that we do with our project plans, that we do internally. So, we still have Paul Thompson and, you know, and the legal team on the case here. So, that's not going to change. We'll still have that comfort level. And I would also add that this will be a relatively quick turnaround. So, this isn't going to drag on into the summer months. It's a fairly aggressive timeline to get this relationship established between the TIDS.
Doug?
And just one thing I failed to mention is that, I mean, even with the closure of TID 6, if the council decided to do that, the council is still bound by the rules with respect to expenditure restraint. So, that, you know, it's a little bit more complicated than just saying-
It's always more complicated than it seems.
Yep.
Alderman Gale?
I just want to echo Doug's, you know, Doug's statement on the expenditure restraint with the TIF districts in particular. You know, money that in the general fund, we actually do not have the capacity to actually spend it under our current arrangement. So, it would just go into the surplus, which has been growing. You know, we actually cannot spend the money we have there. So, the other point to that would be the fact that we've had, you know, significant investments and significant staff time developing TIF 13, highly appropriate to the other taxing jurisdictions should share in the cost of the near-term development and professional services that are going to need to get that up to speed, get it fulfilled. So, to the extent that you keep TID 6 open for a few short number of years to help fund those costs, it's a worthwhile investment that the rest, the entire taxing community is going to share in, not just the city.
Other comments or questions? Motion- Motion on 22. Thank you. Rosemary Anderson.
920 East Ryan Road.
Can you pull the mic down a little bit? Is it on? Go ahead.
I don't know.
Just start talking.
I would like to know how many acres are in this proposed development?
Doug, how many acres are in the proposed-
We don't have the final district boundaries yet. This is, by this motion, by this action, they would be actually authorizing us to go ahead and prepare that project plan. That would also come back before the Plan Commission for a public hearing, as well as final action by the common council and joint review board. We don't have that, the boundary is set yet. So, I mean, I think that there's some flexibility in how the city pursues that district boundary.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay, what's your question? You've got to direct your questions to the chair.
If we don't know how many acres are going to go in the TIF, how do we know that we're going for a blight?
We will. I mean, if I may, it's not that we don't know, it's just that the final boundary hasn't been decided on. And we presumptuous of me to say exactly what that boundary was, absent the involvement of other staff. And when the time, when the public hearing goes to the Plan Commission, when the public hearing is published and authorized, then the project plan will be available for public review. That will have specific details on the boundaries of and the lands located within that district.
Doug, wasn't there a blight study done on this property, or this proposed area?
There was, although it was a much larger area, actually.
Doug, you had also said-
Direct your questions to the chair, please.
I've also heard that there were three adjacent developmental projects to this TIF district. Basically, I had heard that it was going to be the property east of highway of Fifth Avenue. Is that what we're talking?
Any comment, Doug?
It's speculative at this point, because the boundaries have not been determined.
Okay, anything else?
When they are, you'll be able to see that as far as the public hearing and the availability of the project plan.
I would also remind council that you don't have approval for a donor TIF, and that approval has to come from the Joint Board of Review. So there's a lot of speculation on where you're going to get your money from.
Thanks for the reminder. Thanks for your comments. All right, motion on 22.
Someone will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11794, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Vandewell and Associates for the preparation of the project plans for an amendment to tax incremental District Number Six, and the creation of tax incremental District Number 13 in an amount not to exceed $20,000.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalem. Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Alderman Verhalem, was that no?
Yep.
Thank you. Moving on to engineering. Item 23 is a consideration of resolution number 11789-020717, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to Payne and Dolan Inc. This project involved the installation of roadway improvements in various locations citywide. Project number 13024 in various districts. Mike Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the acceptance and final closeout for the contract that the city had with Payne and Dolan for work that was performed in the construction season 2013. So that was quite a few years ago. Council may recall, there was an issue with some warranty work that was done on one of the road sections, and that was a bit of a drawn-out process, but that was finally resolved. And so the monies that were held were basically some retainage. So final quantities have been calculated. Contractors in agreement with those quantities. And so staff's recommendation is that that project be closed out.
Mike, what was the total award-
Alderman Gail.
Sorry, what was the total award package of this, when all said and done?
Yes, the, it was awarded at $934,815.10. Actual quantities measured, installed and measured, paid for is a bit above that, 7.3% above that, at $1,3,705.51. So basically, just under $69,000 over the awarded amount. But there's a unit price contract, so we do pay on actual amounts. Highlighted some of the roadways where we went over the estimated amount, we had some undercut and porous upgrades on Griffin Avenue. We've had excess of base patching concrete and some asphalt on some of the other roadways counts for the overages.
Big picture, small money on a large contract. The lift.
All done? Alderman Kirkowski?
Mike, is this the project where we had issues with the work taking so long on various streets? Concrete and asphalt issues? Or is that another project?
No, that was one of the previous years. I believe that was 2011 or 2012.
Had significant delays and stuff? Okay.
And that was before we changed some of the rehab methods on some of the concrete roads. So it's less destructive. It just allows the work to proceed. Less obtrusive, I guess, to the traveling public.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion on 23.
Gail, move to approve resolution 11789-020717, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to Payne and Dolan Inc. This project involved the installation of roadway improvements in various locations citywide.
Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
All right, jumping back to 17, it's a consideration of a motion to approve the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $294,650.18 and 2017 vendor summary report in the amount of $1,135,990.26 for a combined total, combined total of $1,430,600, 100 and 400? That's just too many numbers in a damn agenda item. At this point in the evening. All right, the last part says, for a combined total of $1,430,640.44.
We took it away.
City Finance Director is here to answer your questions. No questions? Alderman Gail?
Well, I'm just telling you, just for the audience, nearly half of it is paying for a fire truck preemptively. So that's $573 and change, $1,000.
A long-deferred fire truck that's finally being put into the fleet. Get in the fog. Delivery soon.
With significant discounts with-
Yeah, 40,000 plus.
Yeah, good job. All right, anybody else? Motion on 17.
Gail, move to approve the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $294,650.18 and the 2017 vendor summary report in the amount of $1,135,990.26 for a combined total of $1,430,640.44. You got it's done there?
You have a future. You have a bright future. Nice job. Roll call.
How many market reports?
Oh, I need a second. Yeah, second.
Kirkowski, a second.
Kirkowski, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
And the last engineering item of the night is item 24. It's a consideration of resolution number 11792-020717, approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement for the Aurora Medical Group, Inc., for the development at 200 East Ryan Road. Tax key number 874-9994-001 in the third district. Mike?
This is the property at 200 East Ryan Road. It is the Aurora redevelopment of four properties that have been compiled, put together on that corner. Total of 4.7 acres, utilizing the existing large office building. And then some additional improvements, parking and whatnot. There is a, they are actually, have somewhat minor impacts as far as additional impervious. So stormwater is somewhat minimal. They do intend to put in a retention pond, and I should call it more of a detention pond, because it will be a dry bottom pond that will, parallel Howell Avenue, along the east side of Howell Avenue, where that restaurant had been. And it's going to be a, rather than just a standard dry bottom pond, it will be a bio-infiltration basin. So, any questions? This is then the standard agreement, that if they do not take care of these stormwater facilities, that we can step in and have a contractor do that and assess them the costs.
Are you worried about that?
Not with this property, no.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure. Questions, comments? This is a win for, this whole project is a win for that corners. One of those blighted corners looked like heck for a long time, so, big win. Questions, comments? Otherwise, motion.
Verhalem makes a motion to adopt resolution number 11792-020717, approving a stormwater management practice maintenance agreement for the Aurora Medical Group Incorporated for their development at 200 East Ryan Road.
Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Licensing, we'll hand it off to Alderman Kirkowski.
The license committee did not meet prior to the council meeting. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 25, Kirkowski, make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 11 individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports received.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
26.
Kirkowski, make a motion to grant a Class B beer license to Aaron P. Brown, Agent Oak Pro III, LLC DBA Candlewood Suites, 6440 South 13th Street, with issuance subject to payment of their 2016 personal property taxes.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And 27.
Kirkowski, make a motion to grant a transient merchant license to the Window Store Home Improvements, 2706 South 163rd Street, New Berlin, Wisconsin, to the four individuals listed on the agenda. All salesperson.
Verhalem, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
All right, under miscellaneous, item 28 is a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. A) Section 19.851E, to discuss the terms of a finance development agreement with Emerald Row 2 LLC and Emerald Row Holdings, Inc., for TIF loan and grant assistance for Phase 2 of the Emerald Row development. B) Section 19.851G, to consider the notice of claim of David and Paula Diamond regarding damage to their home at 8638 South Shepherd Avenue, sustained on December 18, 2015. Alderman Gail.
Gail moves to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. A) Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub B, to discuss the terms of a finance development agreement with Emerald Row 2 LLC and Emerald Row Holdings, Inc., for a TIF loan and grant assistance for Phase 2 of the Emerald Row development. B) Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G, to consider the notice of claim of David and Paula Diamond regarding damage to their home at 8638 South Shepherd Avenue, sustained on December 18, 2015.
Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalem.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
At this time, we'll go into closed session, in the closed session chambers. We will turn off the live stream. When we come back, we'll go back into open session, turn the live stream back on.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Aye.
Item 30, Alderman Gail.
Gail moves to deny the notice of claim of David and Paula Diamond regarding the damage to their home at 8638 South Shepherd Avenue, sustained on December 18, 2015.
Kirkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Epstein.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 31 is a consideration of resolution number 11793-020717, approving the finance development agreement with Emerald Row 2 LLC and Emerald Row Holdings, Inc., for TIF loan and grant assistance for Phase 2 of the Emerald Row development in the second district. The applicant is here. You have a presentation? No? Okay.
And nothing else to do?
If nothing else, motion.
Bakovic will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11793-020717, approving the finance development agreement with Emerald Row 2 LLC and Emerald Row Holdings, Inc., for a TIF loan and grant assistance for Phase 2 of Emerald Row development.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhalem.
Uh, one comment. There's too many variables involved with this thing for me, and I'm going to vote no.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
4-1. Good luck. Want to add anything? Come on up. Haven't seen you in a while. Congratulations on your new addition.
Thank you very much for having me here today.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Rick Barrett, and I'm from Milwaukee. So I'm thankful to be here tonight, and I appreciate all the hard work that's went into this. And I think most of all, I just want to tell everybody how proud I am that we're doing an amazing project in Oak Creek. I think it's important to note that we are now fully stabilized on the first phase of Emerald Row. And it's been pretty amazing to think that we started the project and delivered August 1st, and we're basically stabilized out through winter time. I think just to give a little focus to that, in downtown Milwaukee, we are lucky to put together 15 to 20 leases during the wintertime. And on this particular project, we absorb these units through the heart of the wintertime, through the buzzsaw of winter. So it's a testament to every person here that Drexel Town Square was the right thing to do. And more importantly, the investment that you guys have made has been admired from community after community after community all around Milwaukee Metro. So, thank you for having me. I'm proud to be a partner of Oak Creek. And more importantly, I'm here for the long haul. It's, when we started this, I told you we'd be here for a long time, and here I am again. So, thanks for having me.
Thanks for the partnership. All right, moving on. Item 32 is a consideration of resolution number 11795-020717, authorizing the submittal of a Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation site assessment grant, application for the property commonly known as the Bioversal Property and the subsequent appropriation of funds for a site assessment grant pursuant to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Oak Creek and HSA Commercial Real Estate and/or assigns in the first district. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked the last council meeting in January on this potential and exciting partnership with HSA. And we talked about the steps we were going through, these very initial steps, and what we wanted as a city, our role to be in those steps. And I should back up, these two are kind of connected, these next two agenda items, so I'm speaking to both of them now. We threw many discussions with HSA, with the WEDC, who is the state agency purveying the grant. We have determined that what our role is and what it should be at this time is exactly what the goal for our role to be was when we last talked. And that is simply serving as a conduit to facilitate the grant funds. It actually is an improvement to the role that we thought we were going to play in that we are not even fronting the monies being advanced or expended on behalf of the grant. We're actually just a conduit for retrieving reimbursement between parties. So with that said, we have a unique opportunity, as I expressed to the council. This is a required step yesterday, today, and tomorrow for anybody coming in the door wanting to take a look at this property. And what I'm speaking to is an investigation of what's actually on the property. We've also taken some initial steps to make sure that we're just dipping the toe in the water right now, and the property's issues do not become the city's issues, if there are any issues. So with that said, the city team is definitely prepared to recommend that we move forward with the SAG submittal. And what will happen past that, in terms of the property and the redevelopment of the property, will be another discussion after we determine what it's going to take to get to redeveloping state. to take to get to redeveloping state.
Okay, questions or comments? Motion.
Kirkowski, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11795-020717, authorizing the submittal of a Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Site Assessment Grant, application for the property commonly known as the Bioversal Property, and the subsequent appropriation of funds for a site assessment grant pursuant to the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Oak Creek and HSA Commercial Real Estate and/or signs.
Bukavich, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 33 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11796-02017, approving a Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Oak Creek and HSA Commercial Real Estate and/or signs in the first district. Any more we need to know about that? Nope. Any questions? Motion.
Kirkowski, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11796-02017.
Read the number over again.
Number 11796-020717, as it should be.